Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. We will call our meeting to order. And I'm going to call on former Mayor Pro Tem Jimmy Linnan. He's going to do our invocation. Josh from Trailhead was supposed to be here. Evidently, he's running a little bit late. Jimmy will do our invocation. Jimmy, thank you for being here tonight.
My prayers are just not answering more. Where is he? It's good to see you. Let us pray. Our gracious Father, for this beautiful day and for the blessings you have bestowed upon us, we thank you. We thank you for this city council. We thank you for this city. We thank you for the employees. We thank you for Alman, an employee that passed away. We just ask and pray that you'll be with his family and bless them and just keep your arms around them. Be with us during this time. We pray that wisdom will abound and our council will make the right decisions. Go with us to our homes. The God was just there in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'm going to invite the basketball team on in. They've been practicing, so. Come on in, ladies. Y'all just keep standing because we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? I'll ask everybody to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are the Graham City Council. We appreciate everybody being here tonight. And rest assured, everybody that's here will have opportunity to speak if they want to do so. Now, we're going to do a proclamation honoring the Allamance Christian School varsity girls' basketball team. Here's the proclamation. Whereas the 2017-2018 Allamance Christian School varsity girls' basketball team won the NCCSA state championship. Whereas the 2017-18 Allamance Christian School varsity girls' basketball team defeated Faith Christian out of Ramzour, 51 to 44. Whereas this is the first state championship in 32 years. Whereas we recognize the following team members with great pride. Jamie Edward, Hannah Engel, Maddie Varga, Amber Pickett, Marissa Daltry, Ebony Lawson, Savannah Cogden, Haley Engel, Victoria Briggs, Peyton Finn Cannon, Erica Lewis, and Kalen Florence. The head coach was Paul Burns, assistant coach Scott Briggs, and Jenny Delorge. Now therefore, I, Jerry Peterman, Mayor of the City of Graham, do hereby express congratulations for the significant accomplishments achieved by the 2017-2018 Allamance Christian School varsity girls' basketball team, and also our gratitude for the pride and recognition they have brought to themselves, Allamance Christian School, and our community, this sixth day of November 2018. If y'all meet me up here, we will present you with this and give you a big round of applause. Come up, Coach. How y'all doing this year?
Great.
As you can see, we're getting ready right now.
I see that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, as you know, to you. All right. I present you this proclamation. And if you want to say a few words for the lady?
Oh, just how proud I am. I've worked with a bunch of these girls for about four or five years. So these dribble off their feet, rode into the stands.
Amen. I can attest to that. Y'all may see me again. And will again. So be careful. Is there anything else you want to say?
Real proud of them.
Ladies, anybody that wants to say anything? Anybody on the council want to say anything? One more step. Now, y'all welcome to stay. We're going to have a meeting here right now. It'll be a whole bunch of fun.
We've got short attention spans. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. A, approval of minutes. B, approval of memorandum of understanding for the city of Burlington. Ah. Let me go back to number one, the Graham Historical Museum Advisory Board update. You going to do this, Elaine? Please come up, please. Let us have your name and address, and let us know how you're coming along.
We're coming along quite well, thank you. I'm Elaine Murin. I live at 1213 Raspberry Run. I currently serve as the chairman of the Graham Historical Museum Advisory Board, and I'm here to give a report on the museum redesign project. Before I begin my report, however, I want to take a minute to recognize Mayor Peterman, whose initiative and stewardship, the museum would most likely not exist had it not been for that. Additionally, a couple of other people deserve a thank you, and that is Councilman Melody Wiggins and Brian Bossitt, who is the director of Parks and Rec. Their partnership, their sponsorship, their participation in this project have been invaluable. So I want to say thank you. The historical museum redesign project, it's been quite an undertaking, a lot of hard work. And although we still have a little bit of tweaking to do, more than a little. I'm pleased to report that the museum will reopen on Friday, November 30th, and Saturday, December 1st. We will be open going forward every Friday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This launch date coincides with the Graham Christmas parade. And so we're hoping to attract people visiting downtown to our museum and to kind of get acquainted with this little gem that we have over there on West Elm Street. The goal of this project has been to organize and design museum space in a way that offers interesting, visually appealing exhibits and tells the story of Graham. We were fortunate to already have dozens of artifacts in the museum, as well as publications, photos, hundreds of photos, books, maps, public records, and personal memorabilia from area residents. Certainly, space is at a premium in the museum. However, we've done our best to showcase the most unique items to spark interest to visitors that come and entice them to return to see what's new. And we are determined to create a popular destination in Graham. In addition to the main exhibit area, a museum library has been created on the second floor. The library is designed to provide a comfortable reading, research space for people to come. It will contain publications, and we do hope to grow the collection of books up there over time. Another component of the historical museum is a small welcome center, and it's located just inside the front door. We will have books and other pamphlets and things like this about the history of Graham and area attractions within Allamance County. As we continue to develop the welcome center, we plan to offer some books and on the history of Graham giveaways, things for sale, and that sort of thing. The goal there is to create sort of portable publicity for the museum, for the city of Graham. And again, hopefully to have people come back and, you know, come back time and again. Designing this exhibit space in the museum is only one component of the project. This revitalization initiative has a lot of moving parts. For example, the museum advisory board has completed an updated acquisition and accession policy. We've begun an outreach in the African-American community to promote interest and participation in the museum. A marketing communications plan is currently under review. We will develop a speakers bureau for the purpose of hosting small events, like book readings, lectures, demonstrations, things like this. Again, we have a small space, but we hope we can have people come and enjoy it. We continue to network with other area museums, county historical groups, visitors bureaus, and state conservation and preservation centers. And we need to learn more about artifact preservation and techniques for running a museum. And so therefore, we are reaching out to the various agencies and other museums. Most importantly, the museum advisory board hopes to recruit people who would be interested in volunteering at the museum or who would like to offer items for loan or for permanent exhibit. And we definitely have a growing wish list. I can attest to that. So as you can see, the museum project, the redesign, has been a huge project. We have certainly not taken it lightly. And on behalf of the museum advisory board and the Parks and Rec Department, thank you so much for letting me give you this update, and I invite you to come by and visit us. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I would ask Mary if she would use her talents to maybe advertise this a little bit. Let's do a video that we can put on social media.
Yes, we're working on that. We've done a photo shoot this afternoon for a pamphlet that's being published, hopefully by the opening. I've done an e-blast to the various area and state museums around, and I'd love to have Mary help with a lot of things. But in fact, we are reaching out, and yes, we will be using a lot of, hopefully, graphics and technical things to make our exhibits come alive.
Well, just, you know, as far as room goes, there's plenty of places, Beard Cove, places like that, that you can seat 50 people that would do it as a meeting in the afternoon early, maybe, or something like that. There's places around we can meet without moving all your stuff out of the museum to meet.
I'm not sure I understand that. What is it?
If you want to have a meeting, you don't have to have it at the museum. You can have it across the street. You can have it next door at the coffee shop or somewhere like that.
That would be lovely. Thank you. I'm sure everybody appreciates you offering that, right? Yes, we would be happy to do that. And as a matter of fact, part of our speakers bureau initiative will be to reach out to the senior citizens groups and to have them come up with an idea for a memory morning, to come invite them to the museum to share memories and to identify pictures, photos, and stuff like that, and make it into an event. So we do have some interesting activities. We will have guest speakers, and we will try to plug that into the various big events that come nationwide, actually. So hopefully, we will make our mark. And anything else?
Yeah, I do have a question, Mayor, if I may. So Elaine, give us those hours again. So the grand opening is going to be November the...
It's Friday, November the 30th, and Saturday, December 1st, and it's from 10:00 to 2:00. And then going forward, it will be... Excuse my voice, I have a cold. And then going forward, we will have every Friday and Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. Those will be the regular hours.
Okay, every Friday and Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00?
Mm-hmm. And I'm sure when we get going forward in holidays and things like that, we'll have to adjust. But at this moment, the advisory board shows those hours somewhat conservative. But as we grow, that will change, I'm sure.
So you guys have done a lot of work in that museums.
Yes, we have.
How many offices, maybe a city question, how many offices are we still going to maintain or do we have at the museum?
There'll be four.
Okay. Is there that possibility in the future that the economic downtown developer's going to be housed in that location as well?
There could be a satellite office, is my understanding.
Okay.
For that position. There's three recreation and parks offices there, with that fourth office being a satellite, is what the request was made.
And that, the offices have a separate entrance and exit that go up the left side, so it doesn't interfere with the opening of the museum during the hours? It won't be any confusion of people seeing people go in and out the front because this is a separate entrance and exit on the side?
Correct.
Okay.
To eventually have that signed in some way to more clearly define the space for the recreation offices being upstairs and museum's main entrances here.
Gotcha. Thank you, Brian.
It's on our wish list. We get a new outdoor sign that says "Museum." Yay. Anything else? Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, approval of minutes, approve the memorandum of understanding with the city of Burlington, approve adoption of the budget ordinance amendment for the fiscal year 2018-2019, approve requests from the ALCO vets to close the city parking lot located on the corner of East Elm Street and North Marshall, approval requests, approve request for ALCO vets to close the 100 and 200 blocks of East Elm Street to include the intersection of North Marshall Street and East Elm Street. Does anybody want to pull any one of the things off the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull B and D.
B and D, anything else? Then I need a motion to approve A, C, and E on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose likewise. Next, we'll go to B, memorandum of understanding. Lee, your concerns, please?
No concerns, Mayor. Just want to get a, just a brief description of almost sounds too good to be true. Is this really true?
We'll go to Frankie with that. Frankie, please.
Yes. It's an extension of existing cooperation that cities have, and largely behind the scenes. Most folks do not know that behind the scenes, the cities, particularly Graham, Meven, and Burlington, have a lot of things going behind the scenes that one city may be doing for the other city. And this is just another example. And if the opportunity presents itself, we would afford the city of Burlington the same opportunity to house their data with us.
Okay, but we're going to be using some of their fiber to get the information over there and put servers in their facility?
Correct.
Okay.
We have fiber connections that we share already for various purposes. This is an extension of that.
Okay. Five-year agreement, three-year termination from any party?
Yeah. That's reasonable to us. A lot of your hardware only lasts three or four years. It's five would be the extent. This is not our only source of data replication, but it would be a great local source with a dedicated communications link.
Are we having to purchase an additional server to store over there, or do we have a server that we use?
We planned to purchase if he hasn't already purchased. Do you know if he's purchased? We have hardware or have planned to purchase hardware anyway. This has been on our horizon for quite some time.
Because I noticed there's no cost involved in it, and I was just curious about it. We had all the equipment in place.
Wouldn't be any additional cost above what we would do anyway.
We already have what we need.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions? For everybody from the floor, what we're doing for my point of view, we're looking at storing our information somewhere else. And we're doing an agreement with Burlington to do that. It's a little above my knowledge on how they're doing that, but that's what we're trying to do. That way, if anything, heaven forbid, happens here, we will still have the information about your records and my records in somewhere else. So with that being said, I need a motion to approve B on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose likewise. All right, next we'll go to D, approve the request from ALCO vets. Lee, your concerns?
No concerns with this one. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about the event. I understand that things are, there is a lot of interest in the event, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that interest from Lieutenant Flood, if possible.
Lieutenant Flood, and we've got Richard and Chuck back there, so we've got plenty of people to say some good stuff. We're looking forward to it, aren't we?
It'll be a big weekend, that's for sure.
Yes, it will.
So just a little more information on that, as you see, it's a request in there for the D and E, also both of them related to the event. Our original request, of course, in E was the block, just the 100 block. Due to interest of vendors and participants and things going on, we've exceeded what we can get into that block, especially with military trucks that were saying, hey, it's going to stay. So that's why we put in that request to go down into 200 blocks, which we're not going to go all the way to Melville Street, but over into that block a little bit. And then with D, with the rides, Cook Amusement has expressed interest in bringing rides up for the event to help offset the cost that ALCO vets would incur for it, the nonprofit organization would incur. He's asked to be able to operate his rides Friday night because he's going to charge ticket sales. So his ticket sales would help cover that expense where we're not having to come out of the funding that we have as a nonprofit that will be used towards veterans to pay for these amusement-type rides. So that's why his request is in for that Friday night, to operate a little bit longer, make a little bit money to cover, more money to cover his expense and bring them up. And ultimately, in the end, hopefully reduce the expense that we've got to pay out as a nonprofit on that end. That's what that goal is for that.
All the families need to know they need to come downtown Friday night.
Friday night, weather permitting.
Okay.
That's one thing we've been watching, is the weather's looking like a chance of rain for Friday. Last time I saw, they talked about it maybe out of here early day. Originally, they were saying Friday and Saturday, but now it's like Saturday's going to be clear for us, which is the main day of the event. But yeah, Friday night would be a good time down there. We're actually already going to be, myself and Chuck, several of us will be down there most of the night, Friday night, as far as getting stuff marked off and getting everything ready for it to roll Saturday morning, so.
How many vendors you got committed?
I've got a list right here. So we're, let's see, five or six food trucks now, and then about 40 vendors.
Wow.
Nonprofits and actual vendors. We've had a couple to back out. We've had a couple to add. Actually, sat down the other night and started mapping it out of where we're going to lay everybody out. And then in the middle of the meeting, we got another email here. Here's another vendor, and I finally closed my laptop, and he said, all right, we'll wait till next week. So we, uh...
That's great.
People calling wanting to be a part of this. It's definitely growing. We did the lineup yesterday for the parade. The parade itself, when you look at the entries, is about 117. But when you break that down for mayor, like one entry, for instance, with the Patriot Guard riders, he's saying they're expecting possibly 80 bikes that may come with them. So some of those have multiple vehicles, especially when we get into the military trucks. It's five or six vehicles. It was counted as one entry, so it's going to be a pretty long parade as well. But it's been a great interest from it. We got all the local bands coming. One thing that's new this year that we're actually doing is we're doing a drum line competition at the festival that day. Several of the high school bands are staying for that, and they'll actually compete against each other. And we've got a trophy. Chuck's about that tall. It's a trophy about that tall that has room for plaques at the bottom, and their school name will be put on it. The day of the Christmas parade, when all the bands are there, will present that school with it. They'll keep it on display at their school for a year. The next year, it will come back and make that thing to get the high schools involved as well.
You got the lineup for Saturday there, as far as the parade and the bands?
I do not have the lineup right here in front of me. I do have it, though.
And there's three or four bands going to participate?
No, we got all the county bands.
Oh, I'm talking about actually bands. It's going to be playing.
Oh, lineup for the bands playing. Chuck, I think you have that, the actual schedule for Saturday.
So Chuck Tally, 808 Saby Street. So we have 11:30, we have the Graham Choral Group actually singing from 11:30 to around 12:30. At 12:30, we have Mason Love, Magnificence with Clinton Horton. He'll be there up to two hours, up to 2:30. We have an hour and a half break. We'll have Larry Sykes and possibly another guy that'll come in and play with Larry. He's a Vietnam vet. He'll play for around an hour and a half, and then at 4:00, we'll finish up with Mason Lovett. All right, and there's two, this is good, there's two World War II exhibits. And we're probably, we're expecting around 25 World War II veterans that'll be there. So we've actually rented a special float in the parade for them to ride on.
Wow.
So it's got, it's some really good stuff going to happen this time. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Let's explain where the funds are going for it. People come up here and participate in this and buy some. Where do these funds go?
So the funds that we raised from ALCO vets, they're designated to assist veterans here in Allamance County. None of the money goes outside of Allamance County. Now, the festival itself, some of the funds we raised in the nonprofit helps to cover the festival, which the festival is viewed as, that's to recognize and honor all of our vets. And then beyond the festival throughout the year, we'll get requests that comes through Veteran Services. When they have somebody that comes in there with a need, they first reach out, and if there's no other organization that can take care of it, then they reach out to us as a board, and we vote on it. And it could be anything from, I think we got to talk with the other day and looked at somewhere, there's a veteran right now because of his disabilities. He needs his bathroom redone, so his shower's handicap acceptable and compliant. And so that's something that, you know, they have building ramps. So it's a lot of areas that we can fill in to help these veterans here in Allamance County that a lot of times would otherwise fall through the cracks because there's no other services out there for them.
You have to be a veteran to be a member of ALCO vets?
You do not have to be a veteran to be a member of ALCO vets, because I'm not a veteran myself, and I'm on the board for the nonprofit. So you don't have to be a veteran. We welcome anybody that has an interest in actually honoring and being involved in assisting our vets here in Allamance County.
Any other questions? Anybody? Thank you all. And Duane, before you go, the search the other day for the missing young man, pass along the word that you did a wonderful job. I appreciate it. I'm glad he was found.
Well, you know, when you bring that up, I had that in while I'm here, is that, you know, what we were able to do Sunday and finding that, we could not have done without assistance from other agencies and organizations coming in, the Highway Patrol, Allamance Rescue, Allamance County EMS. So we had a lot of DOC with the blood answers. A lot of personnel that come in to assist with that. The media was a big help in that and locating that young man.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now I need a motion to approve D on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose likewise. Good luck. We're pulling for you. We'll be there. All right, next we go to old business, the Highway 54 corridor study. And Nathan, I think you're handling this for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, in the fall of 2017, the Durham Chapel, Carrboro Metropolitan Planning Organization in the city of Graham funded a study to consider the future of the Highway 54 corridor between Graham and Carrboro. While there were many competing interests in the plan, the study authors have balanced all entries and concluded that widening to four lanes is needed for all of the corridor, on or before 2045, with the portions closest to the municipality suggested to be in place before 2035. The project is needed because some portions of the network are already over-leveraged, and our 2040 projections, our year 2040 projections, suggests that there will be in excess of 32,000 cars per day towards Interstate 4085, as well as more than 18,000 per day east of Highway 119. There are increasing congestion concerns due to the growth being experienced in the Burlington-Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization, and congestion is further exacerbated by the growth of employment opportunities in and around UNC Chapel Hill.
Questions established. So Melody, please.
None at this time.
Griffin.
What are they? It mentions the other jurisdictions, which you don't have to say all of them, but what are we talking about there? Everything between here and Carrboro?
Yes. I believe that I had a slide for that in the full presentation. But the short answer is the Burlington-Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization, the city of Graham, Sweptonville, Saxbaha, Allamance County, Orange County, Carrboro, and the Durham Chapel Hill, Carrboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, just to start. Of course, there's also nonprofits and businesses and other entities that are through there, including, there's a reservoir for Orange County, which of course has certain water restrictions upon it for development. So it is a lot of groups.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to see there. Now, there's, and there's no real teeth in this? We're just acknowledging that we understand what they found? Is that sort of correct? As to what is, what's in front of us that we approve the study?
It begins to get very nuanced there. If the city of Graham council approves this plan, then as the administrative arm of the board, I would push for the evaluation and preferential treatment of this project brought to fruition as per the city council's desires.
You used the word "plan" that says "study." I guess that would be my differentiation. Were we approving the results of a study, or is there an underlying plan, I guess, is what I'm asking?
The plan is to widen with...
I understand what the study's saying is needed. I guess I'm just wondering what we're approving.
Study indicated this plan amongst others.
And we're acknowledging that the study found that to be the appropriate plan?
Yes, sir.
Different questions, please. Yes. You're showing, sorry, four lanes from 85, actually from Elm Street, but from 85 on the map there down to 119, there are already four lanes. Are we going to be doing any improvements from 85 to 119? The section of 54 inside the Graham city limits, are we going to be doing any further improvements? And we already have four lanes there?
Yes, sir. There are intended to be safety improvements through there as indicated by the pink and purple hash between 119 and 4085. There may also be some access management methodologies that are recommended, potentially another light, the typical interventions that are put in place when NCDOT goes through and anticipates the increased traffic volumes through this area.
Well, with those improvements, that's already widened, be it intersections and things like that, is what you're saying?
Perhaps. They would need to go through the public planning process for each portion, which would have a separate public notice to the adjacent property owners in the surrounding areas that the council and subsequently the citizens that are in that vicinity. public notice to the adjacent property owners in the surrounding areas, um, that the council and subsequently the citizens that are in that vicinity would be invited to.
Okay. Questions, please.
I do. So Nathan, explain to us the, in the future, if this is built out and approved, our match and what that match would be and how much that would leverage to get us within our city limits on this improvement?
Um, as part of the study, it was determined that there would be approximately eight million dollars worth of federal and state monies applied to the project within the city of Graham's jurisdiction, counting our ETJ, although the ETJ and the city limits are very close together in that place. Um, the city of Graham's match for the build out would be required to be, uh, five hundred thousand dollars to get that eight million dollar match.
Good, thank you.
More questions? Then I'll go to the floor. Anybody have any questions from the floor? Right, then I'll move the council to page sixteen, I believe it is, and ask for a motion from the council.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move, we approve the Highway fifty-four West Corridor Study as completed by FHB in the fall of two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, you want to discuss it for, we vote. What is your discussion?
The suggested motion on our agenda says VHB instead of FHB. And then that was just a mistake if I mentioned that. VHB? It is.
Did you say, I thought you said FHB.
I could have. The intent was VHB.
Correct. And I'll stand on my second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Good, thank you, Nathan. Uh, next we have recommendations from the planning board. First reading, amendment to the City of Graham Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Three, Boards and Commissions. Thank you, Elaine. Uh, Nathan, you're handling this also, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, while this one piece doesn't come from the planning board, the second portion, Part B, does. The first piece is an amendment to, excuse me, the Code of Ordinances to, in effect, create a tree board and an appearance commission that's housed within our Code of Ordinances. The second part, Part B, is to remove the tree board from our development ordinance, um, and the appearance commission. If we were to approve these in the reverse order, effectively what we would do is abolish the tree board and abolish the appearance commission from the city of Graham and then subsequently reenact them. So it's my recommendation that we amend the Code of Ordinances first, um, and then we remove it from the development ordinance so that there's no time where the tree board and the appearance commission don't exist. Um, city council requested adding a residency requirement to the appearance commission and the tree board. As these also regulate potential behavior of residents rather than land use, it was suggested that they be moved into the Code of Ordinances. Further, this language will reduce the appearance commission to seven members, which will allow for all members to be seated in the council chambers at the same time.
If you want to do A and B in that order, then we need to have an explanation of the first reading, how we can pass the first readings tonight, if, if that's possible.
If we pass the first reading four to five, then you would have two regulations applied to the tree board and the appearance commission at the same time. And then if you subsequently, um, voted to remove it from the development ordinance, you would still just have one. It just would have shifted from one to both to the second.
But your, your suggestion is if we, if we don't pass A, the first reading, to postpone B?
Absolutely.
That's just, just, alright, questions? Uh, start with you, Griffin, please.
Uh, yeah, I guess one in general. Well, not to be nitpicky, but there's, there's a typo. I don't know how literal we're gonna be with, it's just a capital letter that's not supposed to be capital, but that not something, is that something we're worried about or no?
Might as well be right.
Uh, two dash five seven, number two, letter A, the end of that first line, on. You see where I am?
Yep.
Alright, and then I had one other question, um, about the same part, two dash five seven, section three. Talks about a fee for what I'm understanding to be a volunteer that's, that is trimming trees and we would charge them for the license required. Is that understanding correct or?
No, this is not for, uh, volunteers. This could be, um,
Con.
It would, it would almost always be some, a contractor who comes in and could be for many, many purposes, whether it's, um, cleanup after a hurricane or because a tree, uh, excuse me, a vehicle ran into a tree or anything along those lines.
Gotcha. Sorry. Yeah, I misunderstood that.
Okay, let's check the written word you've got over there, Darcy. Make sure that typo's not in it.
I'm sure it probably is.
We'll need to change that before we, um, before we sign it. Chipper questions? Lee, questions, please?
Uh, no questions.
Melody, questions, please?
No, sir.
Alright, does everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, good. With that, then I'll move the council. Uh, I'll ask for a vote or a motion.
Mayor? I move to approve the ordinance amendment to add Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Division Three, Boards and Commissions to the Code of Ordinances to add enabling language for the appearance commission and tree board.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. So this passes with a super majority of five to zero. Now let's go on to B then. Public hearing, text amendment, appearance commission and tree board, AM eighteen oh eight, commission and tree board from the city of Graham Development Ordinance. Nathan, you're handling this also.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city council has recommended some changes to the enabling language for the appearance commission and the tree board, as well as moving the regulations into the Code of Ordinances. And at this point, effective a moment ago, these are now, um, mostly redundant regulations.
Alright, questions for the staff? Uh, start with Lee, um, Chip, please.
No questions.
Lee, please.
No questions, ma'am.
Melody?
Yeah, uh, in the staff report, Nathan, you've got listed, uh, again, the appearance commission shall be limited to a total membership of nine persons. Is that just incorrect? Or was that the report that went to the planning board that?
The, um, the, the proposed language is to, is on the, the very last page of that staff report.
Okay.
As you alluded, this is the language that went to the, um, planning board and I showed them what the existing language was and then what the future proposed language would be.
Okay, great. I just wanted to be sure that was clarified. Thank you.
Griffin, questions, please?
No, sir.
Alright, this is public hearing. Does anybody from the floor want to speak on this? If not, then I'll close the public hearing to the floor and we'll talk about it among ourselves. What does everybody think?
Needs to happen.
Okay.
It's just, we're just cleaning up. That's, that's for the public's use. That's what we're doing. It's making sure that our boards and commissions are consistent.
Alright, is everybody finished? Then I'll move you to page thirty-two on your agenda and ask for a motion from the, from the board.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the text amendment is approved. Uh, the text amendment is consistent with the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Next amendments to the traffic schedule, uh, A is approve amendment to the city of Graham Traffic Schedule, Section Five, Parking Prohibited at All Times in One Hundred Block of South Main Street. And Mary, I think you're handling this for us, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um, in the interest of increasing parking in downtown, staff has identified an area for addition of five parking spaces on South Main Street between Court Square and Pine Street. The city of Graham traffic schedules currently limit parking in the area closest to Pine Street. Therefore, an amendment to this schedule is required to allow for lawful parking. The addition of the parking spaces on the west side of Main Street would affect traffic circulation by causing the removal of the right turn lane on the south side of Main Street. The removal of the right turn lane is consistent with prior council approvals to install bike lanes on Pine Street.
Before we go any further with this, uh, Melody owns portion of the businesses that's affected it, don't you, do you not?
That is, that is correct. So I will disclose that I am a business owner at Yarmrock Nutrition. So that's to the board for their consideration if they would choose for me to recuse myself.
We should recuse?
Monetary gain.
Gain, or, that has nothing to do with monetary, right, correct?
That is correct.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it either.
No.
Do you have a problem with it?
Yes, sir, I do not.
Okay. Alright, with that being said then, let's go on with this. Okay, questions for the staff? Uh, Lee, we'll start with you, please.
I do. So this is previously, Mary, this is previously something we discussed, especially in front of Bank of America on a previous traffic plan. We had actually approved eliminating that right turn lane and trying to incorporate this parking. So this is not something new. With the exception across the street, the two parking places we're adding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just say, okay, thank you.
Melody, questions, please?
Yeah, let me just make a statement about the building of where those are in front of, uh, one of my businesses. But those are what we've determined were empty areas that could allow parking in those areas. That building has changed somewhat in the types of businesses that are in there. There is no, there are no loading zones or unloading zones available to anyone in the front building. There are lots of different businesses in the front part of that building now that have quite a few customers. So we're seeing real backup in, in parking, it sometimes during the day. So this would allow, uh, on both sides of the street, uh, I think a tremendous asset to the, to the downtown area.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Griffin, question?
Yeah, so we're adding five spaces. It looks like there's forty feet on the, um, east side and thirty-five feet on the west side. Now, we, we have discussed and talked about bump outs in those areas. Is, what's the status of of that and at that intersection?
The short answer is, we don't have the engineering forum yet. The longer answer is, the downtown small area plan, the proposals for the request for proposals came in on Halloween. I have subsequently reviewed all of them, um, and there is a larger group of staff going through and determining the, uh, top, um, three to have do a presentation for, um, a group to determine who would be the primary consultant to go forward with that plan. Um, and as a portion of that plan, there would likely be, uh, some more concrete examples of how to move forward with that. Um, at this time, given the number of things that were up in the air, I think it was determined that Ali Williams, Carmen and King could hold off on engineering what that particular bump out could look like. Um, however, as both you and, um, Mayor Proton Kimery alluded, the council has discussed this very spot before, um, and in so doing, initiated a process wherein staff checked with NCDOT and NCDOT has given approval for, um, the closure of the right turn lane coming south on Main Street and the addition of the spaces on the east side of South Main Street.
So these, the, these, the addition of these spaces is in keeping with what, what we've looked at already and it wouldn't preclude us from doing anything that we've, we've talked about?
Absolutely. The, the added paint expense would just be paint. And so if in some future world it was determined that the bump out needed to be fifty-one feet instead of forty feet, we could then subsequently remove or shift the parking.
Different questions, please?
Real quick. Have we consulted NCDOT about any spaces and they're, they're on hold?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and just for knowledge, I, I, I'll prove another answer, but what, what's the length of these parking spaces?
Uh, somewhere between twenty and twenty-one feet to match what is already out there.
Right. And so we've got over in front of, and I'm pretty, I'm, I'm sure I looked at it today. We've got enough room over on, in front of the nutrition. We do have around six, a little over sixty feet in front of the bank?
Uh, I believe that there was a hundred and thirty-six feet between the driveway, the radius of the driveway for the bank and the radius of the driveway for Main and Pine. And so after three spaces were added, as you say, there would be somewhere around sixty feet left.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Alright, any other questions? Does anybody from floor want to add to this? You understand we're, we're trying to add parking places across the street? Catty Conard from where we're at, at the bank and at, uh, Bo Isley Knitting Mill. So we're trying to add spaces there. With that being said, if nobody wants to speak to that, then I will move you to page thirty-three and ask for a motion from the council.
Mayor, I move to, to amend the city of Graham Traffic Schedules, Section Five, Parking Prohibited at All Times for One Hundred Block of South Main Street to read as follows. Main Street South, east side, north from Pine Street forty feet, and Main Street South, west side, north from Pine Street thirty-five feet.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. That's five parking places. Next we'll go to B, approve amendment to the city of Graham parking, city of Graham Traffic Schedule, Section Five, Parking Prohibited at All Times from Marshall Street, west side from Harden Street. And Mary, you're handling this also.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Forgotten Road Ales, request on-street parking from the city of Graham on Marshall Street from the southwest corner of the intersection with East Harden Street, on the west side of Marshall Street, within the block between Elm Street and Harden Street. This street is, um, viewed as an opportunity for larger trucks to also utilize to avoid Court Square. Therefore, the ask for the first parking spot is consideration outside a hundred feet.
May I ask if, has this been, have the neighbors over there been notified of this?
No, never.
Other than that, one of them is present in the meeting and made the request.
Well, that's talking about the houses, I was, that's alright, with that, Melody, questions for the staff?
How many, I'm trying to see how many, I'm seeing four. Is that what we intend?
There could be addition, there could be more than four. Um, this, the street lends itself for additional parking spots outside of the four.
I'm not seeing, uh, on this picture that we're being shown that they are actually in front of the houses there. Is that correct?
Those right there are not in front of houses. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Griffin, questions, please?
Um, Councilmember Wiggins, although the signing, signage is currently somewhat misleading there, there is parking permitted in front of those houses as the traffic schedule is currently written. Um, the, the exemption is, uh, if I remember right, a hundred and fifty feet south from the, from Harden Street. And then there's a secondary one that kicks in from Elm Street north. But there is, the portion in front of those homes is currently permitted to be parking.
Okay, so the sign, there's only one sign there. Is that correct?
They're currently.
Is there one sign or two that say no parking at any time, or does one allow that?
There's two no parking signs up near, um, the, what's on the screen here. And then there's one where, where the, I guess it used to be the Trangler Hotel.
Right.
That also says no parking to indicate the portion just north of Elm Street.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Griffin, questions, please?
Yeah, I guess I was, we're, we're not sure how many spaces will fit in there. Are we, what are we approving, a, a distance?
The one hundred feet from the intersection.
Okay, and that would continue to meet where the residential standard changes or whatever, the Elm Street up.
Different questions, please?
Yes, um, and I think there's, I may be wrong. I, I am a lot, uh, I saw there was three no parking signs up in there. Um, but you, you want to go a hundred feet from the intersection of Harden Street, which would take you to approximately, excuse me, approximately, um, to the back of the building where Forgotten Road is gonna be. And then I think there's a no parking sign up from that. Now how far back are we gonna come from Elm Street, a hundred feet?
Well, from Elm Street, I would recommend that it says consistent. Currently, right now, I want to say that one is the thirty feet.
Uh, I believe that it's specified in the traffic schedule as being somewhere around a hundred feet. And therefore it would be maintained at, at that amount. Should I go grab the traffic schedule?
I was gonna say, just to confirm.
Um.
I've got one in my office right there.
Okay, we'll go, uh, I'll just suspend it and let, let Lee ask questions if he'd like.
Well, that's why they get back to the issue.
Alright.
That way it won't sound too mad. That way one's on your mind.
But, Mayor, we, right now you don't really know how many spaces you're going to put in there.
That is correct.
Um.
We're just asking for the distance.
I, if now's the proper time, I have a suggestion. I've been out there and looked at it. I think 100 feet from the back of the building, I think you could get five parking spaces up to, and it goes up to about the property line. I don't think we should have any more spaces than that because you got driveways there and you'll be hurting, to me, hurting the site distance. And one of those driveways, the two houses has a shared driveway. I think we need to respect that, that site distance for, you know, I think we could put five in there. But if it works out good, come back and let's see what we can, you know, add more. But I think right now, my opinion would be five spaces.
Nathan, you have some information to share?
So that there is no call out for Marshall Street north from Elm Street. So there is currently permitted parking there, with the exception of there is a standing rule that within 30 feet of any intersection, it is considered no parking.
I ain't, why didn't you come back 70 foot instead of 100?
Currently, currently it's 130. Currently, right now it's 130. All we're doing is increasing it to 100 and now you're going to be allowed to park from that 100 point all the way to 30 feet at the next intersection. Yeah.
Effectively, you're granting 30 additional linear feet.
Yeah, but it looks like we're losing parking places there when you come back 100 foot if it comes to the back of the building.
That's currently prohibited now.
Yeah, it's currently 130 foot is prohibited.
But we're trying to lessen the prohibition.
So we're picking up.
Which in effect allow additional parking spaces.
Picking up really a, what, a space and a half?
Yeah.
Maybe. Yeah. We're not picking up that much, but we can.
Bert went out there, he said at best it might be two spaces.
Yeah.
You can get five spaces from the back of the building up to about the property line of the, where you houses is there? Something like that. You can get, you can get five spaces. I think that would be a good, the best thing to do right now.
Okay.
Because you got, I mean, you got site distance, blocks by a site distance from back out of the driveway, especially with that shared driveway, that could be, yeah, that's, that's just.
You know, you have to rely on your expertise.
That's just, that's an opinion that, you know, you don't want to.
Hurt the site distance. All right, Lee, question?
I do, so currently, let's just clear this up, make sure everyone's on the same page. Currently, it's 130 feet. From that point at 130 feet, you can park on Marshall all the way over to Elm within 30 feet of the intersection, even though there's no parking signs up. Is that correct?
Correct.
So currently, it's allowed from 130. All we're changing is 30 feet. All right? Thank you.
That's not really my question. My question, it looks like we're losing extra parking place there to the driveway of Forgotten Roads. If it goes 100 foot instead of say 70.
Well, look, I love the idea because of all the complaints that I get about parking in the downtown, I love the idea of looking at every available opportunity we have to add parking spaces in our downtown. I love that. So I'm with you, Mayor.
But if there's room right there, would that hurt anybody to park one more right there?
What about, Mr. Mayor? What about truck traffic making that turn? Because that's the alternate route for 87.
To me, if I'm getting lost, forgive me, but to me, from the intersection or from where your radius ends, coming on the Marshall Street off of Harden, from that point, 100 feet, that takes you to just about the back of the building of Forgotten Roads.
Okay, so y'all are all right with doing it to that?
I'm all right with picking up there and going five spaces, which is roughly at 20 feet of spot. That's roughly 100 feet.
We don't have an ordinance in front of us to eliminate the parking that currently exists.
Yeah.
The only thing we can vote on at this point is whether we're going to change that 30 feet.
Griffin had another question. Griffin, if you would.
Are we talking about marking spaces or just moving signs?
Just moving signs.
Why wouldn't we mark spaces? That's a good question. Why wouldn't we mark spaces?
I think that would clear up a lot of confusion if we just had, I'm sticking to five, five marked spaces up through there. And it would be pretty evident and obvious that these are the five spaces you park in and nobody would be grabbing like, I'm going to park right here. And it might eliminate a parking spot, I mean.
There are currently a large number of 20-foot wide, 20-foot long spots throughout the central business district.
Right.
And so to have a location where a vehicle that was in excess of 20 feet, some people may have large trucks or something, it would be, it would, they're currently not allowed to take up two parking spaces, whereas they would be able to park here.
They answered your question.
Yeah, the question's answered.
Okay. Did that stir anybody else with a question?
So we, to be sure, we have, we need to keep that 100 feet, correct? All right, great. So all we're asking tonight, all you've asked us to do is simply take down the signs for parking prohibited at all times. So we're taking down the signs that are there and creating parking. If we so choose to add in, at this point, I, I'm not going to tie your hands. What, what I would be interested in saying is that, let's do that, if we're talking about marking spaces, let's leave it up to the staff to go out there and mark the appropriate spaces that we can get. They may get insects. You know, I think that, let's kind of stick to what we, what we're doing, what we're supposed to do and what they've asked us to do tonight, to just take down the parking prohibited signs, let them go out there and ask them to mark whatever parking spaces we can get on that. That would be my opinion.
Visit that later. All right, anybody else got anything to add?
No, other than I agree.
Okay. Does anybody from the floor want to say anything, man? Janae, are you all right with what is written?
Thank you, guys. Janae Farrar, 141 East Harden Street, Graham. I think it would be preferential to mark the spaces. I think that would be best. That's the only input I really have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that being said, let me move the council to page 34 on your agenda.
Mayor, I would like to say one thing, just real quick, if I may. I would encourage, I'd agree that staff needs to handle this and determine, just like councilperson Wiggins said. I do like the idea of seeing a designated area, especially, you know, now that we're adding some additional parking. It kind of catches people's attention and they kind of see that, hey, there is some parking here now. So just think about that. I mean, just moving forward, you know, whether it's just, just taking the signs down may not be enough. People may not even realize it exists. A lot of times if they don't see those, they don't see some designation for a parking space, they just don't know it's there. And moving forward, I just think it's a great thing that we continue to look at the opportunities of parking in our downtown. So I just think it's wonderful, just to continue to look where we can slow traffic down, where we can get more parking in. I think that's a wonderful thing for our downtown. So I just wanted to mention that.
I agree. I think that, again, even though we're doing what we're doing tonight, I would highly recommend that we finish marking these, that we get them all marked out there and draw attention to these spaces.
With that being said, I move to amend the city of Graham traffic schedule, section five, parking prohibited at all times of.
Mayor, before we make a motion, may I say something real quick?
Let me finish the motion and I'll let you say something.
There's a, there's a, I think there's a discrepancy in the motion, if I'm not mistaken. The, from Harden Street should be south 100 feet and not north. Is that correct?
Looks like it.
North would put it on the other side. This is south. In the motion, it says north. It needs to be south. Sorry, Mayor.
No, that's okay. I appreciate that. Harden Street South, oh, ah, the second line.
Right, down at the bottom.
Yeah. So we will amend the motion as I read it. I move to amend the city of Graham traffic schedule, section five, parking prohibited at all times from Marshall Street West Side from Harden Street South, to read as follows. Marshall Street West Side from Harden Street South, 100 foot.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Some discussion on that?
One more discussion?
Yeah, one more quick answer. This is going to be, this motion is, is all the way up to Elm Street.
Well, it leaves.
Short of 30 feet. Yeah, from the.
All it's doing is taking down the traffic, taking down the parking signs, no parking signs. That's all it's doing.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. With Chip, do you want to explain?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with the parking. I just think we should stop short because of site distance, put in five spaces. And I don't think you're going to get but maybe one or two spaces further in there. And I just, you know, I don't have a problem with the parking there. I really don't. I just think that we should put it off right there at five spaces.
All right, let's go. Anybody else have anything to offer? Nathan, anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Aaron?
No, sir.
Mary?
No, sir.
Brian, you're here?
No, sir.
Chief, thank you for being here, sir. Melody?
No, sir.
Griffin?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Lee?
No, sir.
Frank?
Briefly, I did want to mention the service of Al Mann. Al worked for the city for almost eight years. Most folks, as you can see from the photo, can see the work that Al, that Al did each day, and that was to beautify Graham. And there were some secondary things that he did do, leaf collection and things like that. But primarily, Al and his partner in crime, which we call it sometimes, Mark Manning, are responsible for the flowers and the beautification of the city. They, we have been honored, or they have been honored, two years in a row by the Al Ments Beautiful Commission, both in 2016 and 2017. And, you know, folks, when they retire or leave the service of the city, generally have the opportunity to come before this council and have their service recorded in the minutes[1765.83]